It's a little after ten o'clock, so we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is a regular Commissioners' Court meeting, recounting the Star, Monday, April 10th. Let the record show that we do have quorum, everyone being present. If everyone will please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to welcome all of you here this morning, and thank you all for being here. First item is the minutes. Do we have minutes, Dennis?
I just want to approve the one that's presented.
Second. Moved in second to approve, as presented, discussion. Oliver, please, aye?
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Next is claims. Let's go to our line order.
The claims are in order and are recommended be approved.
Move to pass.
Moved in second, discussion. Oliver, please, aye?
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Before we start with our reports, if there's anyone that would like to come before the court at this time, in essence of time, you're welcome to do so, or if you want to stay and go through our whole meeting, that's fine too. No one? Okay. Then we'll go ahead and start with our report. The gas and Mr. Alvarez on the gas department?
Good morning. Can I be table for next?
Sheriff's Department?
Carlandito no lo quería.
Sí, pero no.
No hablaste con Varej.
No, no.
Tú no lo querés tan.
No, yo pero aquí hay que tener agenda, yo no me digo, no, no, no. Por mi papá yo hablaba porque viviera.
El primo?
No, no.
Sorry, Captain, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Revenue for the month of March 2017 is $148,303.
You didn't have one for last month, or what, you have two?
Yeah, February and March, just because we had asked him to give us a copy of the previous month, so we can compare from month to month.
Correct.
Yeah.
So?
The revenues went up a bit, however, our federal prisoners decreased.
The numbers, money-wise, is higher, less inmate, did we get a raise in the housing of the prisoners?
No, sir. Wish you would. No, it just fluctuates.
Well, see, because you, this month you had ninety-six, and you had more money. Last time you had a hundred and four, and you got less money. Just one more time, or what?
I guess, I guess that's, that's a snapshot on one day, right?
Right, right.
It's a snapshot, the ninety-six or one of four is just one day, but throughout, throughout the month it's up and down.
Well, it didn't make sense, you know, because, you know, you got the less, less prisoners and more money, so, you know, just kind of wondering, you know?
Yes, sir.
Any other question? Thank you, Captain.
Yes, thank you.
County clerk?
That's my report.
Any questions? International Bridge?
Total revenue from traffic was, for March, $228,054. We show an increase of $8,839 for the month of March 2017 compared to the month of March 2016. We show an increase of $23,522.50 on collections for the month of March 2017 compared to the month of February 2017. Rent receipts, $500. Currency exchange success, $191.37. Border Patrol deported aliens, zero. Total other collection, $691.37. Total traffic collection, $228,054. For a grand total collection for the month of March 2017 of $228,745.37. That's what the bridge is producing. So, any questions?
All righty. It's here. Thank you, Commissioner. Elections Administration and Federal State Programs, table.
They're on the table?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other report that I might have skipped or omitted? If not, we'll go on to item six, it's a public audience. Mr. Miguel Moreno, Los Morenos Creek, we're going to allow five minutes, sir.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. How are you all doing? First of all, I am Miguel Moreno, I've been affected by the flooding there in Miranchito area for the, at least, at least the past ten years. I would like to acknowledge and thank Commissioner Alvarez for placing the item in the last meeting that we had here. And then I would also also thank Commissioner Peña for, for the assistance you've rendered. However, I am here again to propose that some type of joint committee where we could have Commissioner Alvarez, Commissioner Peña, Federal State Programs, and possibly Real Delta representative, speak to us on a possibly, possibly, monthly basis, you know, to kind of plan out what's going on there and to be aware. There's a lot of citizens in the area that are concerned about the flooding, they cannot have the time due to, you know, it being Monday after work, they can't really miss work. But, you know, they would like to be here. I do have Mr. Sandowal, who was also signed up, I'm not sure, and I'll let him address the court, he was signed up as well to speak. And he, his mother gets affected more than anybody else, they live on the Dene area of Miranchito, where, you know, you'll have four or five feet of water. It is inaccessible for his mother to get out sometimes, you know, even get, get emergency services out there. So it is a great concern for me, not just for myself or my area, but, you know, the rest of, of the community. And I'm, I'm speaking on their behalf. I do have the luxury of being able to speak to you all on Mondays, I have off, so, you know, I'm here representing them as well. And again, that's, that's all really, we want help from the Commissioners' Court, from the Commissioners. And I think the easiest way is a joint committee of some sort, like I, I explained, because that way we'll have that one-on-one contact with, with the Commissioners, see what their mindset is, what, what, what funding is available, what we could do to try to improve, you know, our, our area, our community. Because it, it's really hard to see people suffer like that, not being able to get out, have their vehicles flooded, you know, they can't cross, sometimes it's inaccessible for the bus as well. And Commissioner Alvarez has been out there, he can attest to it himself, it gets pretty bad with just about, you know, not even an inch of rain sometimes. I know Roma is working on something to improve already, the drainage on Inferno Metis. I just don't know the capabilities of that or anything, and that's why I, I request maybe the representative of Real Delta Engineering to kind of speak to us. In layman's terms, let us know, you know, I'm not an engineer, but I would like to know, you know, what can it handle, what, what is it designed for? Something like that, that, that's what I propose, and I'm here for, you know, to speak to you all about that.
The first thing that we need to do-
Yes, sir.
-is build the channel.
That is step one.
And there are some people that are, still haven't signed those documents.
Which, I believe the County-
Once, once we build that channel, everything is going to change.
Could it get a lot better?
Because we're going to try to see, we can find some money. Remember everything?
It all's all money.
It's all to money.
Yes, sir.
Dollar bills. So we can pave in Ranchito Street, so we can hire, make it a little higher, and put the pipes in there, so that when it, when it rains, that water will flow into the channel and take off to, to the river.
To the river, yes, and like I said, we would just like that, explain, the community would like that explained, Commissioner, and we thank you for that answer.
We'd be glad to explain it every time, you know?
Uh-huh.
But the thing is, that we have some people that haven't signed those documents-
Yes, sir.
-so that we can acquire their land, the right-of-way.
Yes, sir.
Once we have the right-of-way, I'm pretty sure Commissioner Alvarez, I, I take about, maybe two hundred feet, maybe a thousand feet, and that, that's my share. The rest belongs to him.
To Commissioner Alvarez.
But I'm not going to let him work on that alone, we're going to partner in this. But we need to do it.
Yes, sir.
And the first thing we need to do is get those documents signed. Once we have the right-of-way, that we can start, then we'll see what happens.
Okay, and I believe Ms. Laurie has kind of explained the condemnation process, it's going along, but if we could get updates on how it's going, it'd be great, you know, we get affected, I know it's ten years been, you know, since we had that issue there, or possibly a little bit more, and, you know, we, we would just like to hear from, from our representatives, you know, we are your constituents, and that's all we ask, and we thank you for your time, you know. Mrs. Sandowal, can he speak, Judge?
Yes, sir.
He hasn't signed up.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Bueno, de-
No me sienta, Sandowal. Si, es Sandowal. Este soy hijo de Rita, como usted sabe el problema que tenemos ahí va. Desde que bajaron la calle, vea, este-
Y nomás que ustedes tienen un basurero ahí también, que necesitan limpiar.
Okay.
Entiende, de ahí, ese canal que hicimos, ¿en vez de se lo llenan ustedes de mugrero?
Es la, la basura que corre de arriba para abajo.
¿Cómo va a correr, hombre? Las llantas no corren, entonces ustedes lo tiran ahí, y elera, las diereras no van a flotar.
Okay.
Ese es un problema.
Yes.
Y necesitamos eliminar ese problema. Y vamos y limpiamos nosotros, porque ahí traje yo, como a tres personas o cuatro, cuatro, cinco días, limpiando todo el mugrero que había ahí.
All right.
No sé cuántas trailers o cuantos troques camiones sacamos de ahí, pero de ahí sacamos. Entiende, necesitan ustedes, necesitan ayudarnos también. Entiende, nosotros, nosotros estamos listos, pero necesitan ayudar, no nos dejen solos. Entiende, porque si ustedes no ayudan, y avientan todo el mugrero ahí, oye, pues nosotros tenemos que ir a limpiarlo. Entiende, es la obligación de nosotros, pero no lo podemos estar haciendo cada rato. So, por eso, yo sé quién es Rita, y ustedes todos los conozco, y yo sé que hay un problema ahí, pero mientras no tengamos la facilidad de que se cumplan todos esos documentos que sean firmados y todo, no podemos hacer nada en el canal, aquí estamos maniados.
Are you talking about the trash on the back of the road?
No, no, the trash right next to your house.
Okay.
De la casa de Rita. Ahí está en merón frente, en merón frente.
Okay, but that's not-
Alguien lo tira ahí.
Okay, that's not trash, all that stuff that comes, it's kind of like, the people that throws trash, like, goes by, I've been catching people, but when I go, you know, pff.
Ya se fue.
Yeah, they flee. So, they think that, you know, eso ya no tengo nada que ver, que vino, trae, trae, quítate clean, eh, tiran perros ahí, y entonces, yo lo que digo, eh, es la calle que no está vacina. They lower it down.
Okay, pero la vamos a levantar, la calle.
Yes, eso está bueno.
Porque cuando el rey se lava un poquito, para que el agua con media, con medio pie, que le demos de declive, va a ir a caer al cover que vamos a hacer, que va a ir a salir al, al canal ese que, que estamos queriendo hacer todavía, porque ya tengo como seis años-
O más.
-de que mañana, el martes, y en dos meses, y en tres meses, pero pues aquí estamos, ¿qué podemos hacer? Lo vamos a esperar.
Bueno, eso es otro problema, de que cuando flotea el agua de la colonia que está hacia arribita, eh, apuntando al norte, yo-
No, y te voy a decir, quien avienta el agua para ir a la ciudad de Roma.
La ciudad de Roma.
La ciudad de Roma la echa por, por la calle Ranchito, y va a dar donde está usted.
Y ahí la deja.
Y yo hice ese canal, para poder solvilar un poquito que se va al agua, pero si allá me lo bloquean con llantas y mugrero, no cuela el agua.
Okay. Yo, este, yo les he quitado, lo que pasa es que la realidad que entra para allá, nunca los he tratado, que hace, que hace por ahora no estamos ahí, este, andamos trabajando, y cuando llegamos, eh, pues no hay tiempo, pero ya he tratado de quitar eso que hizo usted.
Póngase.
Okay.
Póngase las pilas ahí, y díganme quién es el que está tirando basura ahí.
Okay, now, on the back of the house, there's a rollito que está ahí, necesita abrirse para poder que corra, la cerca tiene todo lo que viene de allá para acá, y es donde no corre el agua, que bombean de allá de la ciudad, sonado, entonces they think that viene a un tractor y, y le raspa más, y se hace más ahí, so, yo tengo problemas que dar lazos, porque yo no puedo hacer nada, lo que pasa es que se sostiene el agua ahí, que si hubiera un camión donde, así lo que hacen allá, la bombean adentro un camión y la tiran a otra parte, there'll be one.
La vez pasada, fuimos a limpiar ahí el mugrero que había, era un basurero.
Ya, no.
Y luego, luego fueron a quejarse, y fue un quejante ahí, a ver si estábamos usando el equipo del condado para limpiar solares, que no es verdad, ya nomás se le explicó lo que andábamos haciendo, se fue. ¿Quién le avisó? No sabemos, tenemos una idea, y mal hecho, porque lo que estábamos haciendo era un bien para la comunidad.
Okay, ah, pues, lo más este, pues, cuando llueve, eso es lo más el problema, que tiene mi mamá ahí batalla para salir, sir, y batalla para entrar.
Pues estamos, estamos tratando.
Sí.
Estamos tratando, pero mientras no tengamos el right-of-way-
Yes.
-no podemos hacer nada, ahí está el Commissioner Alvarez.
Whenever, whenever you talk about, on that project, on the drainage project, your house, your mother's house may still be a problem, and the solution will be to micro out, to move out. But it's just, they have even a roof, that's it. You need a roof, and that's it.
Okay.
Once the project is completed, your mom will still have a problem, I give it to you.
And lo que pasa también, que ustedes hicieron la casa en la meroría.
Yeah.
Y ahí hay un, un, un ismen de veinte o veinticinco pies, no sé cuántos son.
Yes.
Y la casa de tu mamá está en la meroría.
Yes.
So, no, no podemos hacer mucho ahí. Cuando es que le compremos la casa, la tumbemos, y le hagamos otra, en otra parte.
Yes.
Pero estamos viendo, vamos a ver qué va a pasar.
All right.
Entiende, y le estamos tratando, pero necesitan ustedes también ayudarnos a nosotros.
Yes.
Porque nosotros hacemos la solución, no hacemos el problema. El problema no lo traemos nosotros, ni lo hacemos. Nosotros hacemos la solución de ese problema, si ustedes también necesitan poner un poquito y ayudarnos.
I understand, sir.
Y todos trabajamos juntos.
You know, one, one thing I may add, Mr. Sandowal, if you see anyone, and this goes to everyone, the whole community, if you see anyone dumping illegally, get the license plates, and call them in to the Sheriff's Department, to my office, to the Commissioners, so that we can go and arrest those people. We need to clean our community, we need to clean it, but we cannot do it, as the Commissioners just said, by ourselves, we need the community to help us, you know, because you, you guys are the eyes and ears that, that are out there, if you see anything doing illegal dumping, get the plates, you don't have to get into a fight with them, just get the plates, call it in, and we'll take care of that. But we, we need to help.
We live in a community that is very scared, that is afraid, and as long as they continue to be afraid, this will continue to be a problem.
I understand, sir. I understand. Este, como mi mamá no pudo venir, eh, estoy aquí, me hablaron, mi mamá está en hospital, eh, por eso, me hablaron, eh, pues, para poder yo hablar, por medio de, pues, como vivo yo hoy con ella, pues, por eso estoy aquí.
Well, we, we will, we will continue to, to work with you all, and hopefully we'll, we'll find a solution to this problem.
Muchas gracias, Judge, este, como quiera, este, pues, ahí, por medio de, eh, estar con mi, ya le digo a mi mamá, el día que pueda venir de aquí, voy a estar con ella, no? Muchas gracias por el tiempo, sir.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Likewise. Item seven is an action item, and this is to approve the new vendors list. I think you have that before you all. Moved in second to approve, discussion. Oliver, please, aye?
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item eight is an action item, and this is to the preliminary approval of Sonora subdivision. Mr. Torres, aye?
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners.
Good morning.
At this time, I'd like to recommend preliminary approval for Sonora subdivision. It lies under the jurisdiction of Commissioner Science. It's on 755, on the Moss Properties, close to the high school, on 755.
Have you checked on this, because of this problem, make sure this colonial have a proper drainage?
Yes, yes, sir.
You sure?
Yes, sir.
Who checked it for you?
Delta Engineering.
Because he's got a problem on that Embassy Street, water coming all the way down here?
The Embassy.
And that goes to the Embassy, no?
No.
No, yeah.
It's on 755.
On 755?
Yeah. Yeah, we have a one-acre detention pond.
Verification, we're proposing that subdivision, our client worked in our client, we submit the package, and the county sends the package to an independent engineer, in this case, I think it was Northern, uh-
Northern.
...revised improvement for the drainage portion, on the drainage improvement, for proposal.
Because one of the problems that the people have here, because of those developers, they didn't, they didn't, they didn't left adequate drainage for those colonies.
Which colonies?
Well, the problem they got there was that, was that flooding they have over there, and that, that's one of the problems. When the developers don't have the proper drainage for the water, and I have somewhat there, and I had stopped development on one of them, because they have not been able to create, to fix that problem. We have partially found a solution to it, but I told her, you will not develop until you find a solution to divert that water down to the river, because we don't, we need more problems than what we got.
Then we proposed, we, we-
I just want to make sure that, you know, because we don't have, we don't want to have, keep, continue having these kind of people here with this kind of problem.
I just wanted you to take a look at the, the plans on the planties, we're proposing a detention area and drainage improvements, which-
That's fine, I've been just asking, make sure that they're, that it's been taken care of, the drainage problem with the people to avoid the flooding.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Melvin, the heart is doing that.
Yes, Melvin does that for us, yes.
Can, can you get some type of certificate from them? That they're going to certify that that water is not going to create a problem?
Let me add something here, you know, before a plant is, is brought to the planning, the engineers that are preparing the plant, which is in this case is Delta Engineering, they must come up with a drainage plan. Then, when we get it, we give it to an independent, another engineer, that reviews the drainage and everything else that they are proposing, so it actually goes through two review.
Who are the other ones reviewing?
This is preliminary only, it's not final.
No, this is- If you start doing like we did, approve a preliminary up there, in my area, y ahí está todavía la gente estancada with that kind of problem.
Yeah.
And there's people leaving now in there.
In their case, for their defense, this was-
Yeah, it was a long time ago.
No.
Yeah, that was before any of this new model rules and regulations.
Están chiquitos todos.
Alex, promete mucho.
I have motion in second, any further discussion? Oliver, please, aye?
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item nine is an action item, and this is to, to approve a resolution proclaiming April as Fair Housing Month, I believe you all have the proclamation there. We moved in second to approve, discussion. Oliver, please, aye?
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item ten is also an action item, and this is to approve a resolution proclaiming April as Fair Housing Month, I believe you all have the proclamation there. We moved in second to approve, discussion. Oliver, please, aye?
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item ten is also an action item, and this is to approve a contract, a grant contract between County of Star and TCEQ in the amount of $80,946.
That's for a prison work.
We got this correct, this is our grant application that we applied for last July, and we just got the contract.
But that's, what is this money going to be used for? Can you approve the, the replacement, so we can all?
What is this for?
Emergency management.
What are we going to use it on?
The TCEQ Commission approved for generators to be bought with this grant.
What do we, I mean, it's ridiculous, you know, using this, or gener, what do we need generators? We need equipment to fight fires and all this kind of stuff, you know?
All of that, all of that wish list was submitted-
We need to get the brush from the oil.
Yeah, all of that wish list was submitted to TCEQ, and TCEQ Commissioners decided on what needed to be-
Well, the problem is that TCEQ doesn't know our lead, you know?
Mr. Montalvo did appeal it in August, and they told him this is the only thing that they did approve it.
Only for generators?
That is correct.
I mean, that-
We, everything was submitted, we got four for each-
You get the generator itself, so you can buy it.
That's-
You know, I mean, you know, it's, I mean, it's nonsense, you know? You know, because-
I mean, this is what they approved for, so.
Well, either, either we take the generators, or we don't take anything.
I think the public should know, what are we going to use the generator for? Let me take it, what are we going to use it for? Who, who are we going to go plug a generator, somebody, everybody runs out of power? Who are we going to select to go give them power to?
This, this generators are, in case you all have to have a, a control center in your precinct, and the power is out, hurricane hits, all power is down.
We have one in the, in my fire department, we have one that automatically switches on.
Okay.
I look at the-
This can be a backup.
These monies could be used for something, something useful.
I agree.
Right, and we agree, and like I said, I mean, you don't have-
I agree, we, we need dozers, we need loaders, we need other things, but unfortunately, this money comes with a lot of strings, and that's one of the strengths, you know, you can-
Somebody probably don't have any money, somebody has a general- So if we don't, if we don't buy the generators, we don't keep the money.
Correct.
Correct, it has to be returned back.
Let's pass it. Oh.
That's in the motion.
I have a motion in second to approve.
Somebody pitching somebody to sell the generator somewhere up there with-
Discussion. Oliver, please, aye?
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item eleven is an action item, and this is to approve a resolution to oppose Texas House Bill 3766, Mr. Science, will you want to?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Judge, Commissioners, House Bill 3766 has to do with a, a law that was passed in 2009 called the Hazelwood Act, designed to provide basically a four-year scholarship for veterans in the state of Texas. Texas happens to be the only state in the nation that has this law, and gives four years of college to, to veterans. The requirements back then to qualify for this started with a veteran that served at least 180 days of active duty, so that meant that even reservists-
The one, the Boy Scouts will qualify for that.
Exactly. Weekend, weekend, what we used to call weekend warriors. So, that was one, and this-
And this bill, this bill is, is, is suggested that they cut down on this funding, right?
That is exactly right, Commissioner, but it's what, the, the person that filed it, State Rep. JM Lozano.
Is from Gable, born in, where, Harrah?
Yes, sir, District 43.
And he wants to oppose what?
He wants to, he wants to cut it down. He's saying that it's costing too much money for the state to fund it, somewhere between $200,000 and $300,000 million a year, to fund it, so they want to strip it down and make it more difficult for veterans to qualify. One of the things they want to do-
¿Vino a lajar ese? Vino al American Dream, ahora está- Dream, he's a dreamer. I don't know if he's, if he-
I have a motion in second to, to go ahead and approve the resolution opposing Texas House Bill 3766.
Si, cuanto que fuimos a pidiendo para el American Dream, ya estaba, que no, está mal.
Want to come and pizza, yeah.
Si. Otra forma.
Oliver, please, aye?
Yeah.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item twelve is an action item, and this is to seize the permitting of amusement machines. This was placed by me, I think that at this point in time, it's just best to go ahead and seize all permitting, and go back to the way it was.[1715.12] and go back to the way it was.
Second. Did you move them down, Victor, all of them already, or nomasuna quanta?
Well, Commissioner, we started out approximately two and a half years ago with about seventy-six, seventy-eight A-liners throughout the county. In fact, we had more than actually the Vegas Strip did, and we have reduced it down to, I believe, last time, four remaining to seven at the most, top end. Some sources tell me four, I think there's seven, but that's where we're at, and we're working actively to hit those...
With this bill, with this...
Oh, well, with all due respect, Commissioner, that's, this issue has never played any part in what we've done.
Okay. Yeah, the, see, and I want to clarify that, what we permitted was the use of amusement machines, which is totally legal to use amusement machines. It's when, when they pay off money that it becomes illegal, and that's where they throw down the sheriff and everyone else comes in.
Because I have been asked, I said that apparently there's supposed to be certain people that will be allowed to. I said, but I don't know that, but I can ask. That this can still continue to operate? I said, not as far as I know.
That's correct, Commissioner. That's, you're absolutely correct. There's no such thing as anyone that's allowed to operate.
Apparently, they, they're supposed to be some people that can still go operate. I said, well, I'll ask you the Commissioners' court, and thank God it was here.
Is this to seize permits?
Yes.
And, and you continue to...
So, ahorita, no, ahorita, we have a city, you don't have to worry about, if somebody's going on, you go shut it down, no matter what, if you get a permit from the county or you're paying money or not, right?
That's the way it's always been, Commissioner.
Okay, no, I can't open.
If they're, if they're paying money...
Well, nowadays, if it's open or not, if they're paying or not paying, they cannot have it be operating. They cannot operate, okay, yeah. I mean, they say, I mean, if we're going to do it, we need to do it.
I think he might have a point there.
Yeah, I mean, I don't care if it's, if they're open, you can shut them down, seize them.
Totally different matters.
Use my machines, no.
Yeah. See, no, but, but those were, in, in the policy that we passed...
We're talking about A-liners specifically.
Yeah. Yeah, now that they're not permitted, I guess...
Everything, because...
You do the pollution point, parent, I have to make sure people have...
That's our information, that we have them heading out to, to Zapata County. That's, that's where they're headed out to. You see, that was also cracking down.
Give me a call.
All in fair, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item thirteen is an action item, and this to approve a waiver requested by the Valdez family in a, for an adult daycare. Commissioner, I don't know who...
Did you get a schedule of what's being done?
Yes, but I understand that it was not brought...
Okay, anyway, this piece of, the waiver they're asking for doesn't obstruct, not even the, the cars that park there. The only thing is, we need to put it, it's, it's for a year. If they can't buy the property they're trying to buy, then we can extend it another year, but they have to come back to the court and ask for it.
Request.
That's it.
Okay, so, so the motion would be to approve the waiver requested by the Valdez family in the Bea Esperanza Adult Daycare, with the condition that the county has no liability on the premises, and that it's good for one year, and if, until they buy the property, and if they, takes a little longer than one year, they need to come before the court.
Yes, because they're trying to extend their, their, their property, they just haven't been able to buy the building next to them.
Okay, they need to come before...
But they're working on that.
They need to come before the court for...
In a year, if it, if they don't do anything, then they, they need to come back before the court, and redo it again.
What I understand is that when, by December, this waiver will be entered by City of Roma, then it becomes a problem with City of Roma.
Okay. I move, we pass it.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item fourteen is an action item, and this to approve field number one...
Does it give approval during the claim for...
Okay. Item fifteen is an action item to approve a refund due to agriculture use exemption on account zero, 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 three, two, four, in the amount of two thousand, six, twenty-eight. Ms. Salinas?
In front of you, there's the Texas, the Texas code, which says that delayed application for appraisal on the agricultural land, it's the same, it's the same that, the same item that was tabled on last Commissioner's court.
Oh, which, whose property is that?
And this is Victoria Norberto, Nicolas, and Sara Cantú.
Your Honor, I have a problem with that, okay? And, and we got a meeting tomorrow in the appraisal district, and I have told, called the chief appraiser that I want to see. I saw, and you were there, ma'am?
Yes.
With that lady.
Yes, sir.
The paperwork, Your Honor, where you do your transfer to property owner or, or your egg use, is exactly the same, only thing they changed is the value. And I need to know why, was it changed? The value was changed from, from, from ninety-four thousand to four thousand dollars. With, you don't apply for the egg use in time, you're gone. So, I don't know what they brought in here, and I, I went the other day to talk to them, she wasn't there. But I saw the paper, and you were there in front of them. It doesn't change a damn bit, only the value. So, I don't think we should refund it until, see why did the, the ARB change it?
What, do you have a meeting?
Tomorrow.
You want to table it?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a motion to that?
I do some move.
Okay. This item was asked for your Commissioners' Court, for your consideration, based on the, on the adjustment that was made in the appraisal district. Now, if you want to wait for tomorrow for the meeting, that's fine.
Let me tell you, let me, let me tell you something. I rechecked it and I talked to you, and you saw the paper and I saw the paper.
Yes.
So, I don't see why did they make the change on the value. I don't care who the property owner is or not, if it's right, it's right, if it's wrong, it's wrong. And I need to know if the, if the ARB did it, I like to know why.
That needs to be corrected, or make any changes in the appraisal district.
Who's the owner? Es el Norberto Cantú y Sara Cantú.
Okay, I do have a motion in a second, I do need to call for the vote. All in fair, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. The next one is also a refund to a fifty percent disabled vet on account number zero, zero, five, six, five, one, five, in the amount of one hundred and seventy-seven dollars, seventy-six cents.
This is for a fifty percent disabled veteran? Who...
Your Honor, let me tell you something again, I've already told them twice, but they don't read it. It shouldn't say exemption, it's a reduction in value, in value. They reduce your value, not an exemption. So, but, I mean, he's entitled to, to do that, because I just found out, because I checked it out, and they have, they have a schedule of fifty, thirty, sixty, and they do eighty.
Would that be a problem? You, you...
The warning, if, if the end result is the same judge, the different publicity stories, Commissioner, the motion, the reduction in value, but isn't that the appraisal of districts function now?
What?
Isn't that the appraisal districts function now?
It's the, it's the appraisal district, but they're, they're putting this, it's, it's not an exemption.
Yeah.
You go out there and you get, just like, you get your home state, same thing, a reduction in value of your property. Like, if you go on, when you're over sixty-five, you get a twenty, twenty percent deduction.
And the appraisal review board that takes care of that, Commissioner?
Yeah.
So, the word, the word here is wrong.
Yeah.
So, it should, but actually, it should be at the appraisal review board, not here.
I don't know who put in the agenda.
I put it in the agenda because...
Last time I told you, ma'am, that is not an exemption.
But it's my, it's my obligation as the tax collector to bring it into any, any concern.
I thought it was your responsibility, you, I thought you had the full authority.